You are in the meeting now.
All right, good morning. Welcome and we call the Board of Trustees Finance and Operations Committee meeting order. And I'll be the conflict venture statement, but good morning, committee members and guests. Now coming on finance committee operations. To begin, we'll review the conflict adventure statement, expectations of conduct for board members and all attendees. Under the state government's Ethics Act, all voting members of the Board of Trustees had a duty to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Looking at the agenda for today's meeting. Does anyone know that you have a conflict of interest or an interest that would give rise to the appearance of a conflict of interest? So please let me know now. Right. Clearing up the expectations of conduct for our meeting as we begin the business portion. I would like to remind everyone of today's expectations. We ask that those attending today remain respectful, respectful of attendees, attendees and the committee. Those attending an official meeting may not engage in contact, conduct that is inconsistent with our bylaws. Or that interferes with the rights of others to observe and listen to the proceedings. Any individual who disrupts the meeting will be asked to leave, may be subject to arrest. Our first action today is the approval of minutes from September 29th, 2023 committee meeting. Is there a motion to approve? So thank you, Jeff. Is there a second? Second, second, thank you, Tommy. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, it's true. My second act item will be the consideration of certain tuition fee adjustments fiscal year 2025. The associated materials are included in exhibit D1 in your board effects material. Vice Chancellor Dan Lezal will present this item for consideration.
Thank you, Chair Harris. The, as you may recall, every December, we come to you with a proposal with regard to the next year's tuition and fee rates. The process is guided. Yeah, the process is heavily dictated by the UNC system policies. And it is kicked off in September. We received guidance in the form of a letter from the UNC System Office. As with last year for tuition, for tuition, no resident undergraduate based tuition increases are allowed. We are allowed under, under the current, under this year's guidance to ask for increases in undergraduate base tuition, non-resident undergraduate base tuition, but they have to be market based. Graduate based tuition and differential increases are also allowed both for non-residents and residents. And again, should be based on market based and based upon program needs. We are not allowed to establish any new specialties unless there are newly approved, approved programs. You may recall, a couple of years ago, we were, we were allowed to establish a fee for the new tech program, which, which we did. General fees, the guidance there are, is that we may not exceed 3% overall for all of the fees. And they have to be used for inflationary or cost increases rather than other new initiatives. So in terms of our tuition and program fee adjustments, again, we will not be requesting any increases for resident undergraduate tuition. We are requesting a 3% increase in non-resident undergraduate tuition, which is $637. This continued in the third quartile of our national peers, which is a good sweet spot to be in. We are similarly requesting a 3% increase in resident graduate tuition and a 5.1% increase in non-resident graduate tuition. We are requesting a new differential for graduate tuition's program differential for the Masters of Health, Joint Masters of Health Administration and Masters of Business Administration dual degree. This is not a new program, but it is a, a new rate. Currently, the, the students in this, this joint program have to pay both. They pay tuition differential for Masters of Health Administration courses and a separate differential for MBA courses. The result of that is that those students that are in joint programs often pay more than those students who are solely enrolled in the Masters of Health Administration and Masters of Business Administration program. So we've been, it's been recommended to us by the system office upon our request that we, we seek to create a hybrid rate, which is what we are requesting here. So it's, it's not a new program and students are currently paying fee, but this makes it a much more affordable fee for, for those students in the joint program. As noted there, the tuition increases that are being requested generate, projected to generate about 1.4 million in total incremental revenues. These revenues will be used to create five new fact physicians and also three new academic advisors to meet the demand for student services as we continue to be successful in our enrollment, enrollment. In terms of general fee adjustments, the athletics fee, we are requesting a 3% increase in that. 2.9% increase in the health services fee, the student activity fee. For that goes to student services, recreation, union and the renewable energy initiative was requesting a 5.1% increase. Student activities fee that goes to cultural fairs, 13% increase. And those fee increases in total come to 2.9%, which is below the, the 3% ceiling that, that was recommended or indicated by the system office. All of those increases are going to go to mandatory cost increases that those, those units are primarily in the form of the legislative salary increase, which these, these units, units that are funded with these, these were fees must fund themselves rather than with state revenues. We are requesting a, an overall decrease in our debt service fee. These are fees that are levied for various capital projects. The proposed adjustment that we have for our debt service fee is $40 or minus an increase. Again, reduces the overall fee from 634 to $594. Because our enrollment over time has, has trended higher than, than was originally projected when these fees were set. We've actually begun to accumulate revenues in, in excess of the reserves that, that we need to keep. So we believe that it's, it's timely and also good for student affordability for us to be able to, to reduce, reduce this fee. In overall, when you look at the total fee increase, both the general fees and the debt service fees. We're looking at a 1.1% increase overall, which is fairly very, very additive. Just in terms of some future, future planning needs. As you know, we're going to be bringing at a later point in this agenda, a request to move forward with the, the indoor practice facility project. A significant portion of this, the debt service for this $25 million project will come from the athletics debt service fee. Under our current financial plan, we will need to ask, well, currently the athletic debt service fee sunsets in 2040. Under the authorization that we have from UNC system. Under the financing plan that we will be putting in place for the indoor practice facility, we need to extend that to 2054. So we'll be seeking an extension via the Board of Governors for that, for that fee. Again, as we, we know here, that's part of, also part of our thinking behind the, the reduction and the, the other debt service fees that we, that we're requesting this year. There are also miscellaneous service charges, which you'll, you'll see in the exhibit in port effect. These do require just chancellor's approval only. Housing, we're, housing is requesting a 3% increase next year. Transportation fee, which has not been increased in several years, we're requesting a 8% increase. Both of these increases will, again, as with the general fee increases, allow these, both residents' life and partner in transportation to, to handle the costs that they, that they're having to incur due to the legislative salary increases and other operating costs increases. Dining is requesting no rate increase for 2425. So the current dining rate is continuing into next year. These, to wrap it up, this is just the, the timeline that we, that we're operating under. The tuition and fee advisory board, which again is, we're mandated to, to create a tuition of the advisory board under UNC system policy met back in late October to, at, for two meetings, first to hear the proposals and second to the, the second meeting is to deliberate and vote on those. The, which is what you see today, they were presented to the chancellor at the end of October for her consideration and approval. We did have, under the, the UNC system, systems timeline. They do require by December 1st for us to submit, submit our proposed request because the Board of Trustees had not yet met. We had to submit it pending for approval. So we did submit a letter indicating that the board was going to be acting on, on that today. Today, again, you're, you're acting on it. And then there's a two-step process for the board of governors to review and approve. They will, they will take, they will take comment and consider the requested tuition increases by App State and the other UNC system institutions at their January meeting. And then they will vote on those at the following month. There are also, as you'll see in, in your board effect, there are a, a number of detailed slides behind this that provide additional context and information should, should you be interested. Again, happy to answer any questions and request your approval.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? Is there a motion to approve? Jeff, second?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Or motion passes? Third act item on our agenda, approval of four capital projects. Details related to these projects are included as exhibit D2 and on board effects materials. Associate Vice Chancellor Nick Katers will present these processes for our consideration.
Yeah, my presentation.
You can do my presentation again if you want.
Yeah. No, mine's more exciting, so.
Yes. All right. So I, good morning, good morning trustees. Nick Kater, associate.
Alright, so I uh good morning, good morning trustees. Uh Nick Katers, associate vice chancellor facilities. I have four action items for consideration this morning. Three of them are capital project authorizations and one of them is a real estate easement action. And I'll take you through each one of them. Uh that's very good, okay. The first action, which is D two A in your uh in your file, is. Uh a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar authorization for River Street steam repairs. Um in keeping with our utility repair program, we're trying to allocate approximately three million dollars per year. And I and I generally bring one utility project to the to the trustees each quarter in order to keep our maintenance program going. This first one is uh steam repairs standing around River Street from where the dining facility is down to where the tunnels go across. Uh River Street. We've had uh years and years of salt intrusion from the road salt that gets into River Street. And it has deteriorated a good portion of the underground steam tunnels that that uh that carry both the steam and condensate lines. So this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar action is recommended by a professional engineering study conducted by Duberry Engineering. We will uh be replacing and repairing about fifteen linear feet of uh steam tunnel. That has deteriorated to the point where it's no longer safe. We're also replacing about a hundred and fifty linear feet of both steam and condensate lines. Uh that have that have been degraded by salt intrusion. Now, none of this has caused a failure yet. This is anticipating uh. Upcoming failures and we want to try to avoid that. We'll also make significant repairs to five different access points, manholes into the steam infrastructure. This is within the authority limits of the Board of Trustees and uh. Are there any questions about this particular project? Project number two um is the request for full authorization for the indoor practice facility. This board authorized two point three million dollars in advanced planning for the indoor practice facility back in March. And we are now ready to go forward with full authority. This will uh this actually will be supported by a millennial bond action. And the debt service will, as as Vice Chancellor Lozelle said, will be supported by athletics revenues, donations and student fees. Uh there is a uh much more additional detail in your uh board packet as to how the the debt will be serviced. Essentially, and you can see the the artist rendering here, we're removing the existing practice facility and the adjacent. Uh women's softball facility. We're flipping the building about ninety degrees in order to take out the fifty yard practice facility. And make a full-length one hundred yard practice facility. Uh this will be about eighty five thousand square feet. And uh it will include uh not not only the the practice field, but athletics offices, training space. And at least area for uh sports medicine. Uh if approved today, this will go to the January Board of Governors for full approval.
I would also note that uh just before you move on, in addition asking for the project approval. We will also in January be asking for the uh the bond issuance approval from the Board of Governors, so that we're we're asking about at the same time.
Way Hall renovation. This is the uh this is the second time I'm coming back asking for additional money for Way Hall. And it doesn't make me happy to have to do that. Um so. This is a fifty four thousand square foot building built in nineteen seventy six. It was the oldest building we had on campus that had never been renovated. When we started this renovation process in the twenty one, twenty two legislative session, we used the planning factor of three hundred dollars a square foot. Which was widely accepted as the as a reasonable planning factor for academic spaces. After we began the design process and we got through the second set of designs, we knew that we were about four million dollars short at that point. The legislature in this last session was kind enough to give us an additional four million. As we finished the design process and our. Instruction manager at risk process actually went out and started getting bids from subcontractors. We had a number of our subcontractor packages that only had one bidder. But when we only have one bidder, they get another week. It has to be re-advertized for another week. If when in the bidders that were the only bidder knew that they were the only bidder and they came back with a much less sharpened pencil the next week. Unfortunately, that has led to about a three million dollar increase in what we are what we are needing. In order to get Way Hall to a hundred percent of the scope of work that that we need. Uh the the current amount of of twenty one million would get us the second and third floor and then very minor renovations for the first floor. We want to try to give them back a full and complete uh facility. So what we're asking for here is an increase. Using three point one million dollars of our carry forward from the last fiscal year. Um thi- this is this is money that's left over and can be recolored for a capital project. And I assure you with the bid, and this will be the last time I ask for additional money for this building. The building has uh has already been under uh renovation. The second and third floors are currently underway. The first floor is still occupied and being used. We have some unique challenges here and I'll explain some of that a little later. As I as I show that particular project, but pay attention to the glass elevator. Because you'll see uh in the current picture, uh the progress that we're making. So we haven't stopped construction. We just need a little bit more in order to get to to full completion.
So I thought you said this was C and E risk.
This is CM and risk.
So where's the risk?
Yes, there is not a lot of risk until after the bid packages for all the subcontractors have been accepted and validated. This is, I will tell you, this is why we're having better luck on the parking deck, because we're we're using design build. Which is a different process. The the CM at risk process in this post-COVID inflationary environment has proven to. Have very little risk on the part of the contractor.
So it's make sure I heard you correctly. So the rebid, the subs who bid like X today came back. They were next Friday and bid X plus.
They were sealed bids, but when they're the only person showing up, let's say it's the electrical sub or the HVAC sub. Which tends to be our our uh our components that only have one or maybe two bidders. So in a package like this in Way Hall, there's probably between fifteen and twenty subcontractors that have to bid the different packages out. We typically have the most problem right now with MEP, Mechanical Plumbing and HVAC. Those are the those are the areas where there seems to be a shortage of. Of contractor capacity, so we're not getting as many bidders as we would like.
As soon as they realize they won't be included in future.
Yes, I am treating the the CMs that way, definitely, when they when they cannot, when they and they cannot handle their subcontractor. Bits, you know, because we're we work with the CM throughout the entire design process. And and we have estimates that are validated by a third party and they they have to match before we can go forward, but it's not until that. When you actually have to walk your envelope in and drop it off on bid day, that they know that they're they won't the only ones bidding for that package. The last action is a real estate um easement request from the Blue Ridge Conservancy. And so this is a uh this is a no-cost item to the university. Uh what we're looking at here is granting an easement to the Blue Ridge Conservancy to help continue the Greenway Trail. The idea from the Blue Ridge Conservancy is to eventually connect Boone and Blowing Rock together. They have now come up to the area of land that we own. It's old new River Light Power Power Plant, uh Hydro Power Plant land. Uh about a mile south of uh Boone. It's where the Payne Branch Dam used to be. So what they'll do is they'll extend the Greenway from Niley Cook Road through our property and we own property on both sides of the road. Uh and connect it into the Greenway structure that's here in Boone. Again, this is uh all funding is external. So what we're looking for today is a a conditional approval on this. We haven't worked out all of the details uh with the with the county to provide maintenance and other things. The only way we would give this easement is that we're not involved in the maintenance of the of the public easement, so uh. We would like to get some conditional approvals that we don't have to come back and do a special request with the March Board of Trustees. Because this is uh they they intend to go out for a grant application between now and then. And I'll pause here for any questions and ask for your consideration of these four actions.
Right, Nick, thank you. Any questions or discussion on these items? So just one more thing on the Way Hall. So we thought that thing was seventeen and now it's twenty four.
So. The two the twenty one, twenty two legislative cycle meant that we had to turn in our initial estimates in twenty twenty. Uh sort of before during the COVID era era where prices had not started spiking yet. We had used three hundred dollars a square foot as a standard practice, you know, base number. For a for a renovation of an academic space, about three hundred dollars a square foot. Now we're at four fifty a square foot, which is uh you know, three years ago, I would have told you that's unheard of for a renovation. This round, we have value engineered multiple items out of the project already. So we're at the end of our value engineering ability without starting to now eliminate scope and capacity for. That's what we had um or what the the college or the Department of Department wanted for this building.
Other questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve? So uh yeah, second?
Second.
God, thank you. All in favor say aye. Uh any opposed? Say the motion passes. Our final item, an update of the various ongoing CalPRA projects at the university. This item is for information only and associate vice chancellor Katers will begin making the presentation.
Thank you. So again, this is information only. I'm happy to entertain questions throughout and uh I'm gonna show you about ten of the thirty seven projects that we have underway. Uh some of you have some supplemental material that show the other twenty seven projects, but I'm happy to talk about any of them uh at the end of this briefing. So the the this is our construction dashboard at the time. We have recently completed three projects, so we're down to thirty seven. But our placement number is up to three hundred and fifty three point nine million dollars in in active placement. You can see the the different sizes of the projects. Uh twenty three of them are considered large projects. And seventeen are are trustee-level projects under the seven hundred and fifty dollar cap. Uh I'm proud to say that we now have nine project managers and we are in the process of hiring a tenth project manager. So we're adding capacity uh and ability within planning, designing, construction, which is why we're being allowed to start doing design build projects. Which I think will save us money in the long run. Uh the design pro- the design build process relies much more heavily on a. On the same contractor managing both sides of the process of design and construction, so uh. It it wasn't until recently that we were we were able to have the capability here within App State's planning, designing, construction to be able to do a design build. This is the Homes Convocation Center parking deck. Uh my pictures are about a week and a half old. The chancellor has newer pictures. For her communications, people do that on purpose, so her pictures are cooler than mine. This is actually um about twenty percent more complete. Than what you see here. Uh the Homes Convocation Center, I get to remind you, it's a twenty one point seven million dollar self-liquidating bond-funded project. To build six hundred new spaces uh right uh behind the Homes Convocation Center. And you can see the area where the trailer is now is gonna be the 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 faculty faculty street will be shut off or the um. The I guess it's Homes Drive right there. Will be shut off and turned into a pedestrian walkway. We'll have a connector between the the parking facility. And the Homes Convocation Center. This project is moving extremely well right now. The uh in fact, I've had people ask me several times if it's gonna finish earlier. This is the easy part. This is the precast construction. Um sort of Lego block phase of the deck. There's a lot that goes into it. Once the uh all the building blocks are put together, as they go back and add all of the other components to the deck. But this uh started in in June and will be ready in July before the start of the next academic year.
Nick, I got a question. Uh will will there only be one way out of that?
No, there's two ways out.
So it'll go out towards Booney's end?
Yes, again, and we're after several years of arguing with with the DOT. They have now relented and will allow us to put a stoplight in at back at Hill Street and River Street. Uh for years, you know, even even with students getting bumped into by cars there all the time, they have finally relented. We will be putting a traffic light in there which will control access uh into the deck from that side. And then there's another light at the other side. So I think this will be easy to get in and out of this this parking deck.
And this is kind of faculty and student parking and then?
Faculty staff for the most part.
And we're just where where do these where were the folks parking before this?
So there was a service lot there that had a hundred and twenty-ish spots. Um so this is additive to this to this side of campus. We've taken some other spots away during the year as we started working on the innovation campus, so uh but there's a net increase here. We're going from about a hundred and twenty to six hundred.
There's so parking somewhere.
Right, so the people now are parking, play the most part up in the Hill Street lot.
Okay.
Which is a little higher now.
Yep.
Edwin Duncan is on track. The legislature gave us an inflationary increase of six million dollars for this particular project. We are now bumping up against the the high limit of the renovation for this particular building, because it is in a uh. It's in a flood plain, so they they will not allow us to go over this particular number in the renovation, so. Um we're at twenty six point eight million and again, six million was added in this last legislative session to account for the inflationary increase. Construction is beginning in the next couple of weeks. We have been doing all of the prep work for the last uh four months. Building itself has been closed. It has been, we've been emptying the building up and salvaging all of the usable equipment and materials that are inside the building for reuse. Uh later on. The Peacock renovation. This one was originally, originally scoped at uh for a fifty thousand square foot addition, twenty five million dollars. Uh would have been enough. That's five hundred dollars a square foot. Now it's eight hundred dollars a square foot for new construction. We talked about uh renovations going from three hundred to almost five hundred. New construction has gone from about five hundred to eight hundred. In this case, and this is gonna be high-tech space, so there are some, there are some additional bells and whistles in this particular addition that are gonna. That are gonna kind of push the cost up a little bit. Uh so again, this is a fifty thousand square foot addition. Uh the legislature gave us an additional fifteen million, which now brings our total up to four hundred million or uh correction, forty million. Dollars uh for the for the addition. We're in an extended design period, because we have a a number of other issues going on in the same area. And we were using the same contractor uh for both Duncan and Peacock. So in order to not have multiple contractors in the same footprint, we have uh been able to stabilize this. We're using uh MPS, McMillan, Paz and Smith for the designer and Benoi Construction for both both buildings. Uh this will be three stories with the potential to build onto the route later if we want to go up to a fourth story. Way Hall, uh now that now that you've given the additional go-ahead for the additional spending, this will increase that cost. You can see where the glass elevator area is going. The demolition of Way Hall i- is well underway. We've just about completed demolition. On the second and third floors, the whole area is fenced off, but we are still having classes on the first floor. There's some complexity to this, because we have no place to put some of these um technical classes like printmaking. Metal shops, wood shop and the clay and the clay lab. So we're continuing to have classes on the first floor while the renovation is proceeding on the second and third floor. We will close down the first floor beginning at the the end of the spring semester and we will move those um. Those specialty classes into some temporary facilities, hopefully for only two semesters to give to get the uh the rest of the building complete. Originally, this building was gonna be completed next fall, but the delay in the in the budget approval process. That gave us the original four million increase has pushed it well into the fall semester. So we're, while we may be finished in January, we're probably not gonna be able to move everyone back in until the summer session. There's just, it may not be enough time during the winter break to re-establish all of these technical laboratories and get them ready to go. But so we're planning on a on a spring, summer and twenty five completion for Way Hall. The Innovation District is is well underway, so this uh what I'm showing you here is the sixteen foot. For the sixteen acre excavation area, where we essentially shaved off the the top of the ridge line, flattened it out. And in order to have a large enough footprint for a hundred and fifty six townhomes for faculty and staffs. And this is well under underway. Um we have uh also begun with the district energy system. Uh which will make this a carbon uh carbon-free innovation district. So the the geothermal wells that are planned up on the site, there's about a hundred geothermal wells planned. There's thirty that have already gone in. And so we're drilling uh wells to eight hundred feet in order to get the geothermal capacity that we need. This is an exciting location up there. If you get a chance to go up and look, uh this is the largest earth-moving operation that App State has ever done. The conservatory on that same footprint is uh is beginning construction now. We're tying in the uh, we're tying in the district energy system. It's going on the site of the old Roy Hill. We're tying in the, uh, we're tying in the district energy system. It's going on the site of the old Roy Hill. And this building will be built under the living building challenge concept. Again, a zero-carbon energy district will do a water capture of all the water that's, uh, that's collected and used through the building and it will be recycled through the system and eventually used in the public gardens. Uh, the arboretum portion of the conservatory building will have three different climate zones and it, it will also be a location for future venues. App one oh five, phase two is well underway and that's the movement of women's softball and the outdoor tennis facilities. You see in the foreground, the track, which was phase one. On the, on the left-hand side is where the, uh, the outdoor tennis courts are going. You can see the construction of the support building in the middle and in the far background where the old Heisman, uh, softball field was, will be the women's softball field. All three of these components will be complete in, in next summer. In time for, and it's critical to get women's softball complete so that we can begin the construction of the new indoor practice facility. Where you see the, the trailers, they're next to the support building. That will be phase three. That will be indoor tennis. And that'll, that'll get started in the near future. A couple of success stories. This was a twenty-one, twenty-two minor R and R, uh, repair for one million dollars. We did a complete facelift of the area of ground and belt hall. If you recall, it used to have the old pea gravel, concrete slab columns and a number of the columns had started falling off. And so quite a, quite a danger in that area. So, uh, Stone Restoration joined us and matched the columns to the actual original building. It looks much better. In addition, that one million dollars bought us re-glazing, repointing uh, of the brick, re-glazing all the windows, so the, the building is much better, um, uh, sealed up for thermal capability. So this was a, this is a good success project that just finished up, um, around the first week of classes. Another success story is the Hickory Campus roof. This is the first time we have, uh, tried to put in a TPO roof, but it went extremely well. We removed the old ballasted roof, which, uh, probably took several tons of weight off the building. The ballast roof is, the roof is held down by, by gravity. Uh, and that, that, that's just not a common standard anymore. This new TPO, TPO roof using BBC, um, it's actually put on and heat shrunk into place. This roof will last a, a good twenty-five to thirty years. It also, it's, it also makes the roof a lot brighter. We are preset for solar. As we are putting in the new roof, we drilled the, uh, fittings in for solar panels uh, so that, at, at some time in the very near future, we can go ahead and add, uh, photovoltaics and, and start making the building a, a lot more energy efficient. This is a, just a recap of the, of the execution timelines, the major projects. Just to point out, the Innovation Campus is three projects in one. It's the conservatory building, it's the faculty and staff housing and it's the district energy system, all coming online in the summer of twenty twenty-five. So plenty of excitement going on in my, uh, in my area. And I, I thank the chancellor for keeping me very busy because I didn't want to be bored, uh, in this job at all. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or talk about any of the other projects that you'd like to.
Hey, thank you. Questions, comments, discussions? Um, where are those art labs moving to while the first floor is closed?
So we have a couple of options on the table right now. We're looking at a leased facility out on the one oh five bypass. There's a couple of, uh, areas out there. Some of them will, some of the capability will be in our current warehouse that we have. Um, and then we have some options on campus, uh, to include detergent center, which might be able to absorb the clay portion of it. But the other parts of the art building have been sort of reallocated. Some of them are in East Falls, some of them are in Hand Belt Hall. They, they have been moved around and we have temporarily modified some of the, the roofs to be able to handle the capability. We're down to the technical ones now. The metal lab, that's a hard one because we don't have a duplicate of it anywhere on campus, so.
Other questions?
Just a comment. Thanks for the good job and team's doing, all are doing great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Nick. Thank you very much for the work and the presentation, so. Uh, this, this concludes our agenda for the morning. Uh, is there a motion that we adjourn? Scott, thank you. Second?
Second.
Yep, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.